You are watching Access LaPorte County Channel 97. Coming up next is the December 11th, 2023 meeting of the Long Beach Town Council. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www dot access laporte county dot org.
Welcome, everybody, to the last regular meeting of the Town Council. Let's all stand and pledge allegiance. Okay, so opening remarks, as I mentioned, this is the last regular meeting of the Town Council. I'd like to wish the New Town Council all good luck in their endeavors and hopefully they'll have a good one-year term and then hopefully give your life. We'll see. Mary Lou has to leave early tonight due to family concerns, so we're going to switch the agenda of the meeting so we'll do the issues that require votes to the beginning of the meeting and do committee reports after we do the voting agenda. Deanna was asked by her boss, Mr. Perry, to read a letter at this meeting. That's going to take place during the public comments section. So Chief, first let's do presentation of years of service.
Good evening, everyone. Tonight, we'd like to take a moment to recognize public service. Commitment to public service can be a very rewarding and often challenging commitment, and here in the town of Long Beach, we have residents that have stuck up to serve on our Town Council, and tonight, we'd like to take a moment to say thank you, to recognize them for their contributions to the town. Often, a public service can be a very thankless job and comes with a lot of criticism, and sometimes it's unfair that some of our public servants have to serve and be criticized, but tonight, we want to take a moment and we want to recognize and thank you or thank them for their service. So I would like to start with our longest-serving councilwoman. If Mary Lou McFadden could please join me at the podium. In grateful appreciation to Town Councilwoman Mary Lou McFadden, since 2004, you have served as either a councilperson or as a member of the Town Committee. Your commitment to public service is a true testimony of your dedication to the community. On behalf of the Long Beach community, government officials, and Town employees, please accept our sincere gratitude for your dedicated service to the town of Long Beach. We wish you the very best in your future endeavors, the Long Beach Town Council, and myself. Andrew Mullen Coffee, the official Long Beach public. Dr. May, if you could join me, please. As our Town Board President, it's my honor, in grateful appreciation to Town Council President, Dr. Robert Lou May, since January 1st, 2016, you have served as a member of the Long Beach Town Council and have represented the residents with the utmost professionalism. Your eight years of public service is a true testimony of your dedication to the communities. On behalf of the Long Beach community, government officials, and Town employees, please accept our sincere gratitude for your dedicated service to the town of Long Beach. We wish you the very best in your future endeavors. Congratulations. Councilman John Coker. In grateful appreciation to Town Councilman John Coker, since January 1st, 2020, you have served as a member of the Long Beach Town Council and have represented the residents with the utmost professionalism. Your commitment to public service is a true testimony of your dedication to the community. On behalf of the Long Beach community, government officials, and Town employees, please accept our sincere gratitude for your dedicated service to the town of Long Beach. We wish you the very best in your future endeavors. Thank you. Councilman John Wall. In grateful appreciation to Town Councilman John Wall, since January 1st, 2020, you have served as a member of the Long Beach Town Council and have represented the residents with the utmost professionalism. Your commitment to public service is a true testimony of your dedication to the community. On behalf of the Long Beach community, government officials, and Town employees, please accept our sincere gratitude for your dedicated service to the town of Long Beach. We wish you the very best in your future endeavors. Congratulations. And last but not least, Town Councilman Mike Johnson. In grateful appreciation to Town Councilman Mike Johnstone, since January 29th, 2021, you have served as a member of the Long Beach Town Council and have represented residents with the utmost professionalism. Your commitment to public service is a true testimony of your dedication to the community. On behalf of the Long Beach community, government officials, and Town employees, please accept our sincere gratitude for your dedicated service to the town of Long Beach. We wish you the very best in your future endeavors in the sunshine. And again, congratulations, you'll be missed, so thank you. Again, now, in closing, it's been my honor over the last couple of years, I'm a newest member to the Long Beach team, but I can say that the job that all of the members do here, I'm very grateful for everything, either a board, committee, just the role they play as a Town Councilperson, is relentless. I mean, you see them here tonight, they're going to be here maybe for two, two and a half hours, but what goes on behind the scenes, the things that they do each and every day, it's a big commitment to the community. They call me when they're on vacation with their families, asking questions, seeking information, they're constantly in the know, so all of them will be missed. I know a lot of them are going to hang around and help with other things, their knowledge, their experience, the new councilmembers that are present with us tonight, please take the time to reach out to all of them. They bring a lot to the table, and I'm very grateful to have the honor to serve aside them. So again, thank you very much for allowing me to take this time and turn it back a little back to you, Mike.
Great, okay. Thanks, Chief. So next agenda item is legal expenses paid November. Since the clerk is not here or on Zoom, I'm going to just go ahead and read these. Legal expenses paid November, $10,419, year-to-date, $85,590 and 25 cents. Braji Nelson &amp; James was $9,600, year-to-date, $75,630 and 75 cents. Barnes &amp; Thornburg, $819, year-to-date, $8,499 and 50 cents. And Night Hoppy Incarnate, nothing paid this month, year-to-date, $1,460. So I have some concerns about the legal expenses. We discussed that last month. At that meeting, this council voted to pay the overage for Mr. Perry's legal expenses. However, I'm concerned that that decision was based on some false pretenses. On November the 14th, I submitted a FOIA request for all the invoices for the clerk's office legal fees year-to-date. I got back those invoices with multiple redactions, and the year-to-date total was $15,350. The clerk was told, and his lawyers were told, that $5,000 per year was the limit. At the last meeting, this council decided to forgive him about $2,500 that he was over. However, they based that on the fact that he told them there would be very few legal fees in November. What he also failed to mention was that he has eight invoices, actually had three invoices sitting on his desk while this meeting was taking place. He also had five other invoices that he just didn't bother to tell us about. So we're looking at paying about $10,350, excuse me, $10,350 and 50 cents more than what he had approved. First, the redactions, I really have to wonder why all the redactions, given that this was supposed to be work that was supposed to relate to the clerk treasurer's office. I do find it interesting that the redaction seemed to start right around the time when he was served with a defamation lawsuit. This council decided that that defamation lawsuit did not involve any of the town business, and in fact, we passed a resolution to that effect. We were also told that some of those legal fees related to his employees, and they were supposedly harassed by members of this council. However, nothing in the unredacted portions of the description of those invoices suggested that that was the case. We were told by the clerk at the last Town Council meeting on 11/13 that the year-to-date total was $7,680 and 50 cents. That is definitely not the case. And with those invoices sitting on his desk, he certainly had to be aware of them. We were told there'd be no charges for November. In fact, there were two November invoices totaling $1,880 and 80 cents. And again, his limit was $5,000. Also, when any expenditure exceeds what is budgeted, the clerk is supposed to come to the Town Council before those fees are incurred. In addition, there's an ordinance that says the clerk's office specifically needs Town Council approval if they want to spend more than $1,000. That was not obtained. So in my opinion, the decision to forgive his overage of $2,680 and 50 cents at the last Town Council meeting was made on the basis of false information given us by the clerk, and I'd like to suggest that we reverse that decision. And certainly, if at a very minimum, no further legal expenses should be paid if the decision of this council is to not reverse those decisions. And then, we were told at that same meeting by the clerk that further legal fees would depend on whether he felt the Town Council was being friendly toward him. I suspect he's not going to find my comments very friendly. So I'd like to make a motion to rescind the overage that we granted the clerk treasurer at the last meeting, and that we also resolved to not pay further legal expenses. That's my motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Discussion.
Yeah, I'd just say, and I'm not in favor of rescinding the motion we passed at the last meeting, however, I'm going to have the same objection I had when Mr. Wall brought in some invoices for Woodroof on some work done on Stop 28 or 29, someplace down there, and I wanted an itemization, and he provided later date with that itemization, and at that point, we approved it. Same thing here, we got an itemization that they're all, everything is redacted, so I don't know what we're voting on. So I'm not in favor of this overage that he's submitting.
So you're in favor of paying the $15,350 and 50 cents?
No, that's not what I said.
Okay, I'm trying to understand.
It said I'm not in favor of that. I don't want to rescind what we already voted on, but I'm not in favor of, unless we can show that those redactions have to do with the clerk's office and the clerk business, then I'd say pay it. But if it's not, I mean, I don't know what it's for. You don't either, do you?
And I think Mr. Perry is very unlikely to let you know.
Well, then, if we don't know, then I don't know how we can vote on it.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, so at the last meeting, there was some discussion about the fact that other legal expenses for the town were not monitored as closely as what we're looking at his. Again, we looked at the magnitude of the prior year's budget for legal expenses and where we were year-to-date on our town attorney, and you know, it was never a multiple thereof, whereas this, even if you went to the $7,000, it was authorized at that last one by that 3-2 vote. He's doubled that now, a month later. So it is a little suspect, the timing that Bob itemized or mentioned in the itemization, and I agree with you, John. I don't know how we can just give this guy a blank check for whatever legal expenses go on.
I mean, if there's legitimate expenses, I don't have a problem with that, but I don't know if they are or not, because everything is redacted.
Yeah, I just want to point out that the last invoice that he bothered to tell us about was dated 9/8 of this year. Since then, there have been eight other invoices, I would say averaging $800 per month, and even more some months, that we've not, that's more than that, I'm sorry, it's not per month, it's probably $1,600 a month on average. So he neglected to tell us about eight other invoices that were sitting out there that he had to be aware of when he got permission from this council to forgive him of the $2,600 overage. So you know, to me, while he didn't lie, at least about that, he certainly neglected to share with us some very cogent facts. All right, so we have a motion on the floor to pay just the $500. We can vote it up or down. All in favor, say aye.
Wait, 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 wait.
What now? My motion was to not pay anything over $5,000. Okay, so we need to vote that up or down?
That was the recision, essentially saying we're not going to pay the $2,000.
I'm not in favor of that.
Okay, well, let's vote it up or down. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Posed?
Posed.
Okay, I'll make another motion then. I'll make a motion that we don't pay anything over what we agreed to pay him at the last meeting. Is there a second to that?
I'll second that as well.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so it's unanimous, we're not going to pay anything further. Is that, we good with that, Chris?
You voted.
We voted, yep. Okay. Okay, unfinished business. Oh, and then the accounting charge is paid in November, $6,653 and 12 cents to sender, year-to-date, $59,314 and 42 cents. Unfinished business, public safety building progress update?
Hey, one second, Bob, before you move on. It says on this Night Hoppy Kurnic at night, nothing paid.
Right, they had new invoices for last month.
Oh, okay, so, but we authorized their invoices last time?
Yes.
There was previous, they wrapped up something that wasn't covered by insurance, but that's...
So the only legal bills that are not going to get paid are the, anything over the $7,000, roughly.
Yeah, their current representation of the clerk's office due to the insurance carrier decision, that isn't, the town's dime directly, that is part of the coverage, they made that covered.
So, Bob, we need to vote on the accounting charges, don't we? I don't know, do we, Chris?
I think we've already done that in the past.
I think.
I think that's just the summary, right, and then part of your overall, anything that happens then.
Okay. All right. Public safety building, building progress update? John?
Yeah, everybody's been, I think all the council members have received, Mark's been pretty good about sending out the holidays progress reports every week, so just for the public, it's pretty obvious what's going on. We've got the asphalt paving down, all the weather-sensitive site work has been complete, including the concrete aprons, the concrete walks and curbs, and the asphalt work. So we're in real good shape as far as weather, as the weather starts to deteriorate. Right now, they're working on, I call it the eyebrows, but essentially, it's architectural feature around the top of the side walls, that's all going on now, and the, some of the windows are in, the rest of the windows, and the overhead doors should go in the next few weeks, so we'll be totally weather tight shortly, and the interior framing and everything is already started, so we should be in pretty good shape to stay on schedule.
Dr. Lou, I'd like to add that I did email Amanda Lanners today, Department of Health Department. I had also touched base with her last week, at which time she indicated that we're still waiting for a response, and gave months at the state and Indiana level of the health department. I am hopeful in the next week or two to hear something from them. I had stressed today that our construction window, to do the construction of a possible second Presby, it was closing in as the weather becomes worse here in the winter, and I also informed them that the completion date of the new building is in April, so I hope to hear something in the next two weeks, and I'll keep everybody updated.
Has she ever said any reason why it's taken so long to get this certificate from it?
When I did talk to her last week, she indicated that it was a holdup downstate, and they're still trying to decide if it's going to be decided at the state level or they're going to send our pre-application back to LaPorte County and let the local health department make the determination of the needs for our sector. So there's still not been a determination by state, unfortunately.
So we don't have any parameters, maybe John knows, as to about how much all the certificate will cost, worst case versus hopeful case?
No, not really. You know, we knew, we know roughly what it costs as to put that increased Presby mound over there for the last system, I think, Mark, that was about 11 grand or so.
13,000.
13,000, so if they make us do that again, you're looking at that, if we don't have to put another tank in, then that would be, you know, plus or minus whatever is to hook up the line, we've, that'll be put in. So if they may just put another tank over here, you know, that could increase some percentage of that, or, you know, it's just anybody's guess, John.
Just for the benefit of everybody, though, a lot of people have asked, where is the sanitary line for the new building? The sanitary line is under the asphalt and has been terminated out back at the Town Hall, directly behind us here, so the line is just kind of sitting capped off, waiting for a decision from the health department, if we're going to tie it into existing and make some upgrades, or if we have to go with an independent system, so.
So we're set up for whichever way they make it, right?
All right, next agenda item, MS4 ordinance, that's not ready for prime time yet, but that's okay, because the deadline isn't until April. Building Commissioner compensation slash services agreement, I think we've all got that in our packet. I guess I'd make a motion to approve that.
I would second it.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, Stop 16 Trees.
I can go with that.
Do that, okay.
I had the opportunity to speak for the film, which is a true board party since tonight's meeting. At the last meeting, you had approved an expenditure not to exceed $10,000 for the removal of the trees, the cottonwoods at Stop 16. Two weeks ago, we met at the homework, CJ Dempsey, myself, Street Superintendent, Ellen was present, and we had evaluated the trees that were there, a decision was made to conduct a drill test on one of the trees that we did not know in state of decay in the tree. We could see that there was some decay to the base. For the benefit of the tree, we wanted to make sure that if it was healthy, we wanted to save the tree. So we had paid a bleed out of $200, $202.50 for the drill test. Drill test did show that the tree has significant decay, and the recommendation is to take the tree down. So we have two quotes from two independent licensed tree companies, both are registered here with the town of Long Beach. The first quote is for the cottonwoods that are present that are needing to be removed, and the trimming of an additional cottonwood that is in the right of way along Lake Shore Drive that also overhangs the resident's home. Maple City Tree has provided a quote for $12,750, and then Tree Man has submitted a quote for $14,920. So it is the recommendation of Ellen and myself that the council will approve the additional funding exceeding your initial approval of $10,000, and proving the quote tonight for $12,750. The work will be performed more likely in the next 30 days, and we come out of the 2024 tree budget, then we have $50,000 in expenditures set aside for next year.
And Chief, we're sure those two estimates were comparing apples with apples?
The higher one doesn't have as much work as the lower one does, so yeah, we're going to be fine. So if they add the additional work, they're going to exceed their $14,000 over, Maple City can still be the lowest bidder.
Make a motion, we accept Maple City's bid?
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, new business, Lake Shore Drive Sewer LLC slash private sewer agreement. About three days ago, I think we all received this letter from John Wojcik, the attorney for the individuals who want to put in this private sewer. We had been in conversation with them up until about four months ago, then there was radio silence, and then now with us having two weeks to go on our terms, we're being presented with this, I would suggest we table this and send it to the New Town Council. Discussion. Okay, I'll make that as a motion.
My question is, is that agreement, does it include that if that sewer goes through, that if at a later date, the town gets sewered, or the whole town, that they would have to connect to the new sewer, to a town sewer?
There's nothing in there about that.
Because when we gave a private sewer right to the people down at Stop 13 or 14, they had to hook into, if we did get a sewer, they'd have to hook in and shut off the private sewer.
Yeah, I think, John, there's lots of things that we need to consider with this, that is one. Another is, is I know that there's going to involve some patching of some of our roads. I think our roads are going to deteriorate sooner than they ordinarily would have because of this patching, so my feeling is that we've got lots of things to talk about with them, and I don't think we're ready to make a decision. Any other thoughts? All right, I'll make a motion to table. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry, everybody say aye, okay. Approval of Building Commissioner's timesheet, October and November. I think we all got copies of that.
I have a suggestion to Larry, be that when he puts the time down, and he puts in that what it's for, like if it's for the Smith House, or the Coker House, or whatever, you know, because he's got it itemized, which is good, but we don't know what it's for. Just a little job as to what property you was inspecting or looking at.
To address that point, I, because this agreement was pending, I did have a final discussion with Larry, see if there was any changes, and I discussed that agenda item. Remind him that the new contract does provide for itemized invoices, so he's aware of that, and as, I think, as he represented to you before, that he has a journal that he keeps, so, well, even if he were to attach that journal.
Keep just a separate journal, just for the town, not intermix all that with his...
He's aware of my end, and like mine, we were inclined to pass that agreement, that that provision was in the agreement, so that would be an issue going forward. It shouldn't be an issue going forward.
And do we feel that his timesheet needs to come to every meeting, or can the administrator handle that?
I think the administrator can handle it, if there's a question, then the council can ask for it.
All right, so I'll make a motion to approve his timesheets. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we need to set a year-end meeting date to deal with the year-end financials. Anybody have any suggestions?
How soon are we going to be ready?
Well, we got to do it before January 1st, right?
No, I know, but I mean, just trust to have a feel for how soon we're going to have it.
Laurel and I will be reviewing everything on Friday and plan to identify the lines that can be transferred within the current budget versus those that council will need to address, as we have done before, of course. So my only request is that it not be on Tuesday the 26th, as I already scheduled it by end. The 27th, 28th of that last week would be great, I don't know that you want to put the 21st, the 30th, or 4th.
That'd be too soon.
I think it's probably too quick.
What about the Thursday the 28th? How does everybody look for Thursday the 28th?
In the afternoon, it'll be fine.
The afternoon and Thursday the 28th, look all right?
I don't know, but it's available all day.
How about you?
I can, I can handle that.
Thank you.
3:00 P.M.?
3:00.
All right, let's go with that, 28, 3:00 P.M. Okay, ADA grant, so I think everybody's seen that draft resolution that Chris gave us, and then I'm sure somebody's going to wonder about funding. Joy, can I have you... Joy, can I have you address the funding for that? Because that question will be there.
Actually, for the grant, we probably won't be in the budget until 2025. So Department Board has agreed, they put all the engineering, we're halfway into that now. Now the total, about $50,000, and we're done. And then probably the 150,000, we'll have to figure out next year, and we'll get it for 2025. The bids will probably go out next late in the year, or early into the year 2025, and it has to be completed by December 31st, 2025.
Okay. And the reason for dealing with this tonight is because there's a deadline, it's like two weeks from now?
Jan 12th is the deadline.
And so we thought we wouldn't want to have the new council have to deal with this.
It's all four days after.
Yeah, our center meeting, yeah.
Is that a 50-50 grant? Are we half, or?
It's 50-50.
Okay. Yeah, this is the same grant that we looked at at Stop 15 and got turned down for, mostly because we weren't done with the project at Stop 24 yet. All right, so I'll make a motion to approve the resolution. Is there a second?
Second.
Other discussion. All favor say aye.
Aye.
Great.
Okay, then there are documents that you will have to sign.
To sign, yeah.
And you'll get from the clerk, and I think Deanna will give you all.
Yeah, great. Okay, we'll get that done. Dumeun Beach Association Police Contract.
For the benefit of the community, the Long Beach Police Department has two police service contracts with the Dumeun Beach Homero Association and also with the Town of Michigan Shores. We serve as the police department. These are three-year contracts. Both are set to expire on January 31st, 2024. We have negotiated with the Dumeun Beach Homero Association Board. We have negotiated a 3% increase for each year of the following three years, 2024 through 2027. The Board in Dumeun Beach has approved, signed the document, and has returned it to Dr. May's signature tonight. It would be my recommendation that the council approve the renewal of the contract with the 3% increase for each of three years.
So why did I pay now?
Dr. May, if I could see that contract.
That's good.
Mary, to your question, in 2024, it would increase to $56,940. I doubt that they don't have 2023 contract funding, but it would be 3% less of the $56,000 that was the main component. And then the year two would increase to $58,644, and the final year would be $60,408.
Good. So I'll make a motion to approve that contract. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Discussion. All favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, 2024 leases for the community center tenants?
A week ago, the council received an email of the proposed increases for the community center rental spaces. Currently, we have a total of eight suites, or actually more. There's eight that are rented, and then additionally, the Park Department and the Building Department also contribute funds to the overall funding for the community center. The increase for next year, we are asking that the council approve a $30 increase to each of the tenants, except for a $50 a month increase to that of the YMCA, one of our larger tenants. And the overall increase would bring in an additional $24,400, I believe, a year, increasing to $74,364. So we ask the council to approve the request allowing us to move forward with.
Do the tents or the council area that's increased?
They are all except for maybe one or two, I believe. They were just trying to reach the last two, but so far, we'll push back from any attempts. Everybody's been favorable. And we do have one that is not removing their lease, and we will be meeting tomorrow at 9:00 a.m., the Community Center Board and myself. We'll be meeting to discuss a new tenant that potentially wants to start renting in January, and that rental space would be $500 or more a month, but we have not approved that one yet. And that will be coming before the new council for approval, once the Community Center Board works out all the details with potentially the tenant.
Somebody else besides me want to make this motion?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second? All favor say aye. All right, Long Beach Public Safety Building for Approval Change Order Number Two, totaling $17,707.30, concrete credit, $1,516.68, John?
Yeah, these are for two items that we've already approved. One was asbestos remediation. It's just the paperwork following up on it, and the other was that roof drain header. We took all the roof drains. Instead of having drains at the surface, we put them underground, took them down to the header, and put them in the sewer. So we've already approved the work. This is just the change order coming through from the contractor for that.
So we don't need to deal with this?
Okay. $17,000 is for the drain, for the gutters?
No, that was, that was about 11 something, 12, and then the asbestos.
You weren't able to knock down any?
No. It turned out it was a subcontractor bid, so it wasn't something that they had much control over. Asbestos remediation was our responsibility when the buildings came down. Remember the glazing and the windows and the, they just never invoiced for it.
Gentlemen, help me, the total on the asbestos in Little Caucow is $3,675. The downspouts, $11,530. And then the asphalt was $1,500, for a total of $17,707.30.
That's right, I forgot about that. The asphalt, we're not putting the top coat on at this late stage of the year for temperature reasons, so there's a remobilization cost, which that did start out, I forgot what he was asking for. He started out asking for $8,000, and we got him down to $1,500, so.
How much total of change orders that we had to date, do you know?
Well, we haven't authorized these yet, so.
Well, assuming we authorize them.
Yeah, so that, these would be on top of that 300 and something. It wasn't a change order yet, that was just an estimate. So we, these are, that's only change order number two, I believe. Our first, I'd have to go back and look and see what that first.
On the change order that's before you tonight, the new contract sum, including this change order, would be $3,145,536.81. How's that compared to where the town council approved originally? I'm sorry.
It's 2.8. Yeah, we were 2.9 plus 3, Mike.
Yeah, the original, I'm sorry, Mike, was like 2.8 something.
No, but I mean, the revised one, the last one we did.
It was 3.127, there it is, 3.3127,829.51. As we've discussed this over time, John has intimated, specifically, he said, there may be some areas where we're not going to come in, it'll be lower than our actual estimates. I would suggest that we do not change the cap on the total project. We can, we can approve the, the change orders, but I think we still have to recognize that we approved a $3,127,000 total cost for the project. I don't think we should exceed that amount at this point.
Right, that's our threshold, I agree, and then this is, or not our threshold, but our cap, these are the invoices that are coming in. So, you know, obviously, they have an invoice for anywhere near what that 3.1 is.
I understand. I just want to make sure that we are managing this thing back to our original approval, and we're not approving change orders without the some discussion about where we find cost reductions in the places. So we have to maintain the 3127 figure.
Because you'll get construction creep for sure.
Yeah. Mike, to your point, all the change orders that do come forward, I make sure we share them with Trista, with Centurion Associates as well, so that they're aware of them as we work towards inclusion in the project. Because I would say that it probably has to come as a capital expenditure at some point in 2024. So I think there needs to be some language in this motion that iterates that we have not changed the total cost of the project at the stage of approving initiatives to it, although we are approving these change orders, that would be my rendition.
Is that a motion?
Yes, that's a motion.
I'll second. Other discussion. All favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Ah, the Construction Group invoice, number eight, for $364,940. John, this is just a regular.
This is just our progress going.
So we need to approve it, though, right?
Yeah.
I'll make that motion.
Second. Okay, I've done enough.
I'll have a discussion. All favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Austin Associates, Stop 17, 18, drainage problem, drainage project invoice, number, for $5,510.45, approved for payment. Somebody want to make that motion?
Didn't we approve a bunch of those invoices last meeting for Stop 18, 70, or for House?
Is this different?
Yeah, there's a couple of different aspects to that. First of all, there's invoicing for the engineering of the project to get it to the point where they could bid it. Then the second thing was the bidding costs, and now you're, and I think that's what this one involves. I don't have it in front of me, but I think this was the progression through the bidding phase to get the numbers analyzed for us in the, you know, the post-bid meeting, I believe. So we've awarded the contract already.
It's better than being a liar.
Yeah.
All right. So I'll make a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
All favor say aye.
Aye.
Austin Associates, 2024 hourly rate proposal for approval. I think we've all seen that. Hourly rates have gone up a little bit, I think, over previous years. Anybody want to make a motion to approve that?
So?
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Discussion. All favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, ordinance number 2023 dash, and we'll figure out what the number is later. Additional appropriation of funds in excess of 2023 budget. I think we've all got that in our packets.
Was there an advertisement in the paper for the additional appropriations?
John? Yes.
Is that the way we, they're supposed to do things, advertise before we vote on it?
Yeah.
Well, it depends on the subject matter.
Well, the one I saw was like $200,000.
So the advertisement is for the purpose of the public here.
But it doesn't have to come before the board first?
No.
You have to tell them you're going to do it, then you do.
We want the public to be able to come address you before you vote on it.
They have to have an opportunity to convince that they don't want you to do it. The notice is for the hearing.
I know.
And we've done it. Yeah, hearings taking place. All right, I'll make a motion to approve this ordinance. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Discussion. All favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Both? It was unanimous, was it? Okay, ordinance number 2023 with another number, decree funds.
Before you go forward, we want to make sure that we have unanimous vote to consider it and approve.
Oh, that's right, this is.
Ordinance is in the same meeting.
All right, so it was unanimous. Okay, so I'll make a motion.
Public hearing portion of it, we need to.
We need a public hearing then. All right, so I'll open the public hearing. Anybody want to speak forward?
So we'll look for the backup.
Okay.
So that we, so it's a clean here.
Yep.
Let's have a, if you're inclined, have a motion and a vote on considering it for approval in one meeting, which needs to be unanimous, otherwise you're, you're going to open it up, that means you have a public hearing, and then you're going to need to continue, right? So you can, you can open it.
The vote is already unanimous, right?
Well, I want to remember, which is prevent. So that motion, let's approve it and move on, right?
Okay.
So let's have a motion to consider this for approval all in one meeting.
Yep. So I'll make that motion, consider it all in one meeting.
Second.
All favor say aye.
Aye.
You know. Then we vote.
Open it.
Okay, open the public hearing. So open the public hearing. Anybody want to speak in favor? Anybody want to speak against? Want to close the public hearing?
Anybody?
Anybody on Zoom?
22 people.
Anybody want to speak in favor or against? Close public hearing. All right, so I'll make a motion to consider it all in one meeting. So I'll make a motion to approve the ordinance.
Second.
All favor say aye.
Aye.
That was unanimous, we're good.
And then we'll suspend the rules and do the approval in one.
Second reading, that was first reading.
Okay, that was first reading. So I'll make a motion to suspend the rules and consider it on second reading. All favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that was unanimous. All favor from the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, we're close enough. All right, now ordinance number 2023, to create funds related to the opioid settlement, this the same deal?
No, this is different.
But maybe this is the same process?
Process, yes.
Okay.
Any, anytime you want to pass one, it's the same night that it's introduced.
Yep. Think I know that one.
Mr. President, there is no public hearing required, though, for either this ordinance to create the opioid or the public forfeiture, the police forfeiture fund.
Oh, okay, so you can make a motion to suspend the rules and consider it in one night. All favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, so I'll make a motion to pass the ordinance to create funds related to the opioid settlement. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All favor say aye.
Aye.
I'll make a motion to suspend the rules.
There is a second reading.
On second reading? Somebody say yes.
Second.
All favor say aye.
Aye.
And I'll make a motion to pass the ordinance on second reading to create funds related to the opioid settlement. All favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, ordinance number 2023, to create the police forfeiture fund. We don't need a public hearing, so I'll make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
All favor say aye.
Aye.
I'll make a motion to pass the ordinance, number 2023, to create the police forfeiture fund. Is there a second?
Second.
All favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that was unanimous. I'll make a motion to suspend the rules and consider it on second reading. Is there a second?
Second.
All favor say aye.
Aye.
And I'll make a motion on second reading to pass the ordinance, number 2023, to create the police forfeiture fund. All favor say aye. Say second?
Second.
All favor say aye.
Aye.
Just for the public benefits, these are just, we're keeping funds that we have to establish to accept some money that's coming in.
All right, we'll come back to public comments after the, the department reports. All right, so.
Before Mary, do you still have minutes and claims approval?
Oh, yep, yep, we'll do those. Yep, so we've got minutes. Town Council meeting on November 13th. Anybody have a problem with those, otherwise I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
All favor say aye.
Aye.
And then we've got claims approval. And again, the claims approval.
We have to be careful about those.
Right. So Deanna, we want to be sure that the claims approval is not approving any legal fees for the clerk treasurer's office that were not approved last month. So anything from Barnes and Thornburg that is new, that was not approved last month, is not to be approved, nor is to be stricken from the check register. So you should be able to look at last month's check register.
Well, September is what you're approving tonight. You didn't approve current invoices to pay last month, you just.
Right, because we didn't know about them.
Current means the ones on the register tonight, you don't pay.
Barnes and Thornburg, anything, it'll work around 75, 76.
Yeah, whatever the total amount was, which was.
In excess of 70.
I was going to say, don't get it confused with what you already said. Well, last month, the last month's meeting, you would have been trying to approve what was on the October which is, and it was everything without Barnes and Thornburg.
What we approved for Barnes and Thornburg was $7,680.50. No amount more than that should be approved. So if this last check on here takes you over that amount, it is not approved.
Okay, I'm sure.
So I mean, no checks should have been sent out prior to this meeting, and nothing should be sent out until.
They're likely in this tabulation, though, right? Can you check that? Do you know if they're in there? Do you have these overages beyond the 76?
I was going to say, if it says.
Where we got in trouble?
It says Barnes and Thornburg, $819, right now on the legal dispensers paid November. That is what's on the check register that you do not want to pay.
And that has not been paid yet, right?
I can't tell you if it's been.
We didn't sign the check register last night, Bob, because we wanted to make sure those were not listed in there, the ones that were not approved. The ones that were not approved.
They were listed, you just didn't approve. The two of you did not approve, the others did.
Right, so they've got.
It's signed.
So the twenty-six was already in there.
Right.
Which means there shouldn't be any more in this current check register.
And I don't enter and cut the checks.
Yeah.
But yes, I know what you're saying.
Okay.
So there was a check cut for eight nineteen.
If that, and then was it.
On November sixth.
And was that check sent?
That I can't tell you.
Okay, can you tell me that?
Yes.
Okay, if you can let me know, that would be important to know.
Not over seventy-six.
So you.
Seventy-six.
Whatever.
Seventy-six.
But if you sign that check register.
So the check register right now is the one eighty-five, zero twenty-five and nine. And it does include the eight nineteen.
Right.
In legal expenses that we just said was paid in November. You just want to know if it was, the check was cut, I don't know.
Well, we haven't approved that, and so I would like to know if it was sent. Okay, this hasn't been signed yet, this check register, right?
Correct.
So we haven't approved it yet. So if that check for eight hundred nineteen dollars was sent.
Yes.
I want to know.
Okay.
Um.
I'm sure.
Too confusing. Okay, so we approve the minutes. Police Department slash Commission Chief.
Doctor Willing.
Oh, yeah, we need to, yeah, so I would make a motion to approve the check register minus the Barnes and Thornburg dated eleven-sixth of twenty-three for eight hundred nineteen dollars. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Was that unanimous? Okay. Now Police Department slash Commission Chief.
Good evening, everyone. For the monthly of November, the Long Beach Police Department responded to two hundred and thirteen calls for service when compared to two hundred and twelve in the previous year for a slight increase of three follow-up service. During the month of November, twelve incident reports were documented. A total of eight individuals were arrested, which were all misdemeanor arrests. In summary, six misdemeanor arrests for operating a motor vehicle while intoxicated. One traffic-related misdemeanor arrest for driving while suspended. And one misdemeanor arrest for a battery warrant. Overall, it was a mild lump, no major concerns thankfully. I would like to share, because we are often asked, two died to be arrested for operating a motor vehicle while on a golf cart or another device. On November sixteenth, Deputy Matthew Farley was northbound on Carwood Road near Fairwood Drive when he observed a motorized bicycle approaching him that was all over the roadway. During the traffic encounter, the fifty-three-year-old male from the city of Michigan City was discovered to be intoxicated with a blood alcohol content of point one four five EAC. The male was arrested, the transport team were working on a jail. So I just wanted to share that even on a golf cart, motorized vehicle, anytime that you are on a local or state highway, you can be arrested for operating a motorized vehicle. Doesn't always have to be a car, truck, a van. So I just wanted to share it with everybody. Police Commission did not meet. I guess they moved to the town.
Yep.
We are currently seeking quotes. The town's phone system is out of service no longer under warranty. And the vendor that provides the services and maintenance to the town hall phone system has presented us with a voice-over-internet phone proposal. Very familiar with that. I've worked with it in the past. I highly recommend joining to such a system. So I'm currently seeking additional quotes. Competitive quotes to change the phones here in the town hall. We need additional phones in the new public safety building. We did have phones in the previous fire station, so those phones were to be just transferred to the new building. However, if we go to a voice-over-internet phone system, we would save several hundreds of dollars each month on our phone bill. So there is a benefit to changing voice-over-internet phones. The other benefit is anywhere where you have a computer or ethernet connection and a Cat five cable, you can simply plug in a telephone and it's connected to the system. We can add additional phone extensions. There's a lot of things that we can do with a voice-over-internet phone system. So I'll be approaching the new council every month of January or February with those proposals. Leave collection has ended last week. We are still finding residents that are putting leaves out at the roadway. In fact, I had a complaint today in Nichols Court. I've got to follow up with the homeowner there tomorrow that they hired a landscaping company and put all their leaves out on the roadway. We cannot do this. This ended back on December third. We do go through this every year, unfortunately. I think there's just a common assumption that if foot lanes out of the road and closed my eyes, the town will naturally come along and pick them up. Unfortunately, it doesn't work that way. So I've been working with some complaints that have been forwarded to my office and overall residents have been very provocative with that. Tennis courts, thank you to Tom and Brent. They spent quite a few hours last week cleaning all the leaves off the tennis courts, doing some overall maintenance out there. Pickleball nets are now in storage. According to your coach, Norm Brenner, he says that they will return in the spring. Meanwhile, you can still play pickleball inside the gym if you're Y M C A at the Long Beach Community Center. Lake Shore Drive is going to be seeing two major construction projects commencing in January. We will have the Lake Shore Drive water tap improvement project moving forward. That was previously approved by this council. I'm assuming that's going to start probably the first or second week of January. The following month, we will have the stormwater improvement project that is anticipated to start on February twentieth. From stop seventeen to eighteen, there will be a road closure on Lake Shore Drive for that project. We will get information out to the affected homeowners and to the community. So please pay attention to the town's website. We'll be posting road closure dates on the website. Tomorrow, we will be receiving from Morton's Salt out of Chicago our first salt delivery for the year under our salt contract. This is an annual contract that we sign every year to get the salt at a discounted rate. Superintendent Dolph will be meeting with the delivery drivers tomorrow and see in stores the salt for the upcoming school. I would like to take a moment to thank Janice Brown. She has been coordinating with the garden club with decorations that you see out front of town hall and the various town signs across the street by the tennis courts. Janice always goes above and beyond employing the rest of her team and all the volunteers from the various working committees together, which is great to see for cooperation, working with the park board so closely to make these improvements. She's always in a festive mood every year. If it was up to Janice, we could have an entire slate of Clydesdales out front of the town hall. That would cost her a sizable amount of service. So thank you, Mrs. Janice. Neither one of she's under the weather. She's out there performing all the time. And then lastly, on my behalf, the town employees would like to wish everybody have holidays, good rest of health and a new year. And the last announcement that I have is that this Thursday, six P M, we will be swearing in our new clerk treasurer and the new five town council members here in this room. It's open to the public, family and friends, six P M. Local judge from Long Beach, a secure report three, Judge Jeffrey Thorne has graciously volunteered to do the swearing-in for our new elected officials. So everybody's invited to attend that as well. Thank you.
Okay, Volunteer Fire Department, town.
Chief at six thirty, I got.
Thank you, Nina. Yes, I appreciate it. Good evening. For year-to-date, the Long Beach Fire Department has responded to a hundred fifty-nine calls versus a hundred forty-one a year ago. During the month of November, we responded to ten calls, including two calls on Thanksgiving Day. We, from a fire standpoint, we've responded to seventy-one fire calls this year versus fifty-four a year ago. We average seven members to every fire call. Our average response time to a fire call is four point five minutes. From a medical standpoint, we've responded to eighty-eight calls year-to-date versus eighty-seven a year ago. We average five members on every medical call in our response time, four point three minutes. Just a couple tidbits on training. We've begun our annual proficiency test where we, we measure each of our members on practical skills as well as fundamentals, written tests, as well as learning how to work in the trucks and things like that. That's been underway last week. It'll continue for the next month. This evening, our group has been over at the community center. We brought in NIPSCO and they're giving us a GAT school. Very informative, talking about all the gas lines underneath the town of Long Beach and, and how us as a fire department should be working very closely with NIPSCO. So very informative and, you know, and I guess what I'll take away from the moment I was there is if you're going to dig, please call eight one one. And the, the, the gas lines aren't buried deep in the ground and they get a lot of, a lot of gas problems there, but it is free service. You just need to give it two days in advance and call eight one one before you're doing any kind of digging in the yard. We also are, have begun our firefighter one, firefighter two training for our newest members. And that's going to be a long process for the next year or one more. So. Fire Commission did not meet during the month of November, and that's all I've got.
Next, any questions?
Public Works, we have anything?
Public Works, we didn't have, didn't come in yet.
Park Board, Joy.
Park Board, on eleven twenty-eight. We mostly just discussed end-of-the-year housekeeping. But we did have to discuss the fact that with this election, the park board has pretty much been decimated because council members can't be on the park board. So we're going to have three openings, so we thought tonight we would ask. We've received a few already, but people who are interested in being on the park board, we would ask if they would make a resume to us that any of their contact information and what they think they've written to the park board. And that can come to anyone on the council, or Deanna, or anyone. Get them all together and take what they come. I think that's it for the park board.
Good. Community Center.
Community Center did not meet. We're meeting tomorrow morning at nine. If anyone would like to learn about, we should call you.
Doc Willing.
Yeah.
I think it's important as you sort out going forward with park board members that the political affiliations are important to dispose as well because there are requirements for that.
Isn't it like two members of each part?
At least of those. Yeah, it can't be more than two each of the major political parties. We could have, well, maybe if they might pose that, the requirements on there, but we need to make sure that that's.
Submit something to the park board.
To, um.
Okay.
On the park board.
Do you have something made about that?
Yeah, probably. But ultimately, we have, the council's going to have to decide. You know, if you get a number of, a number of people who volunteer, the council's going to have to get their political affiliations.
Information out for the residents. If anyone's interested, please submit you.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll touch base, I'll see Meg tomorrow at B Z A, so I'll touch base with her on that and make sure we get something.
So an independent doesn't have a political affiliation at that.
I'll put it out there. That, that's right. There just can't be more than two of the major. Independent also factors in there as well.
Well, I can tell you exactly. Is it independent? That's the one we have.
That's the one you still have?
Yes.
But you could have four independents. You wouldn't need, that would not be a problem. Counselor? Four independents would not be a problem, I'm imagining.
Not more than two of the same. So I will put the statutory side for all of you. I'll give it to the park board. I'll give it to Meg to print and it'll be that not more than two of the same is the way that the code reads.
But two of the same nature, right? I think that's confusing, like Republican, Democrat.
It says not be more than the same of the same political party.
Well, and that, I just was reading where this business about you're a Democrat or Republican based on how you voted in the last two primaries. And that's been appealed now, and I think the, it's so far been held unconstitutional. So you can probably be any party you want. At least judging by that now, I think it's going to be.
Just declare, if they can declare anything, you know?
Yeah.
I'm a Democrat today, Republican tomorrow.
Well, when the strongest of people line up for those part-to-part positions, you guys can.
Well, and to that point though, there are exceptions out there if there are not sufficient candidates. So the letter of the law is not more than two of the same, but that, that, there are exceptions if you don't have enough on board.
Okay. Budget Finance, John.
Budget Finance met. That's what I was trying to do here with my phone. I really wasn't texting anybody. I was trying to find the agenda that we used. We met. Trista was there from Sender. We talked about the financial information to date quarterly and semi-annually, as well as the twenty twenty-two numbers that are all baked into our new budgets. We talked about unfinished business. Capital plan is one of our major items we discussed. We have all that in budgetarily for twenty-four and the projections and all will be coming to the new council so that they'll have concise financial information about what's gone on in the past and what we would like to see happen in terms of what the Budget Finance Group has been working on in terms of the capital plan that we would like to see you guys adopt moving forward. So I think that's a fair summation of that. If Mike has something else to add, he can.
You've covered it, John. Thanks.
We also talked about the Budget Finance Committee itself, and that's going to be up to the new council, how they want to handle the membership on that group. We've the couple of us have been on the council. That isn't necessary, I don't believe, but you'll have to kind of review that along with all your other committee assignments, but it's kind of an important little group to get. We, we had a lot of work this year because we had a lot of issues to address. I'm hoping now that we're handing over a little more concise dressed-up package, you guys won't have quite as much to worry about, but I still probably think a month and a half ago that gives.
I would agree, and I think that at least one town council member should be involved in finance. There's a fair amount of information that flows through that committee and it really has an impact on future fiscal periods. So I highly recommend that a town council member raise their hand and you member of the finance.
And I think the intent of the new clerk treasurer was to be involved as well, and I think Trista has been very kind and offered to continue to help us. So I think that hybrid then, if you're willing to move that way, I think will be beneficial for you, particularly on the short term you have in your first few months as you get your sea legs. So I think to keep all those parties involved will be wonderful. And then whoever has an interest in that type of thing from you all. It is a public meeting. I mean, more than one of you, you know, you could have more than two of you show up, but generally speaking, the two of us have been there, you know, religiously through the last couple of years in the industry. Okay.
Great.
That's it.
Human Resources, I don't believe they met, did they?
They did have.
Treeboard Ellen still here? Yeah.
We did not meet. Chief already told, told you what we did at this time.
Great. Okay, Building Commission met on November seventeenth. Sixteen twelve Indianapolis, that's kind of their problem child. Variance was granted, however, they're going to have to submit the, the proper documentation. We need to get proper coverage calculations, remove some bricks that have been sitting on the property for a while. Thirty-one hundred Lake Shore Drive, that's the old, I think, real estate office down at stop thirty-one. It is no longer an office. There's a sign still out front. We're going to, we were going to do some research to see if it's now residential. And I'll get back to that at the next meeting. And then at twenty-two hundred Hovland and twenty-two oh seven Florland, it's concerned that a fence was put and a driveway was put on the neighbor's property. However, no permit was obtained for any of that, because if it had been obtained, we probably would have seen that it wasn't on the right property. At the next meeting, we addressed that. And that meeting was on December eighth. And the twenty-two oh two Hovland and McCormick key fence issue, so no permits were issued. We discovered that that was the case. We discovered that it does look like it's probably on the neighbor's property. However, that's kind of between the neighbors, especially since we weren't involved and no permit was asked for. We did, however, decide to issue citations because you got to ask for a permit to do that kind of stuff. So both the owner who paid for the work and the contractor who did the work will get fined. And with that final D, we have to look and see exactly where our ordinance is going with that.
And just clarified, the decision was that both may be, we have to find out when the work was done.
Right.
Recently updated those.
Right.
Both sections, so maybe.
Might be just the owner.
Both, yeah.
Yeah, might be just the owner, okay. And then thirty-one hundred Lake Shore Drive, we did find that that indeed is residential. We're going to send them a letter to tell them they have thirty days to remove that sign. And that was the Building Commission. Any questions about anything there? Board of Zoning Appeals, they met on November fourteenth. The three oh seven Loma Portal Way was discussed. However, the decision was to continue that, that hearing. That was a preliminary hearing and that will be discussed tomorrow at the meeting. And then there was a public hearing regarding twenty-eight oh one Brentwood Way. These were folks who wanted to build a screen porch on the exact footprint of the existing deck. They were increasing the volume of the non-conforming setback encroachment. So therefore, they needed to have a variance. The Board of Zoning Appeals granted that variance. And so that's it for them. And again, that next meeting is tomorrow night at seven o'clock here. night at 7 o'clock here. Building Permit Revenue Report for November, 18 permits approved totaling $913,700.
APC.
Oh, APC didn't meet, I'm sorry.
Didn't meet?
Yeah, we had no agenda items. And in fact, they're supposed to meet a week from today, and right now we have no agenda items. So unless something comes up, that meeting may be canceled. Building Revenue Report, 18 permits approved totaling $913,785 with revenue of $12,407. Three electrical permits totaling $682. And that's it for that. Public Comments, Deanna, you've got a letter of your scuffs to read. Did I forget something?
No.
You have to vote on those, approve the reports.
Oh, yeah. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed? Okay, now, Deanna.
Okay, Clint Perry, reference, he cannot attend the meeting this evening. And he has asked me to read the following letter in his absence as his clerk treasurer, or excuse me, as his deputy clerk. The clerk treasurer would like to extend his gratitude to the people of Long Beach for allowing him to represent them in the last 20 months while filling the vacancy created from the retirement of our former clerk treasurer, Mr. Bill Defunia. In the interest of serving the town and the current and future of town council, Clerk Treasurer Perry has allowed the incoming clerk treasurer, Ms. Meg Collins, to have access to our offices and staff prior to her start meeting of January 1st. Meg has spent roughly 18 hours in our offices so far, and we look forward to accommodating her for the rest of the year in this transition. We are confident that Meg will do a great job for the town, and Clerk Perry and his staff have been and will be happy to aid in the transition. Finally, the clerk treasurer's office would like to entertain a motion to pay for all legal fees incurred by the clerk treasurer's office, including present and future legal bills up until the end of 2023. Please note that these bills are a result of contentious tax of certain individuals directed at the clerk and his deputies in their respective official capacities over the last 20 months. To Perry.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Anybody here? Done.
It's not a bomb. So in the interest of the season and the fact that I was in Gaza for a week.
Turn your microphone.
Oh, turn it on?
Yeah, just press the button.
Introduce yourself to. Donnie Tavon, I'm stuck in Long Beach. Resident since 1953. So at 71, I feel I have the right to say what I can say to all of you. And all of you. So many times we didn't get along, didn't agree. But after what I saw in Gaza for months, I was in a magic transition, which I've been doing since I was 19. The only person to do about it was my father. But I'm sure there's veterans here in this room that have seen a lot of destruction, but I just saw some good things. So I'm trying to get the images out of my mind, but I was loading young children onto buses to England to get them out of harm's way. And I just want to say that I was thinking about all of you in my time here in Long Beach. I've done a lot of things for the community. I want, I was going to know my, sorry.
Two posts.
Okay, I should know that. But I have something for you. Chief, it's not a bomb. May I put it up here on the paper, sir?
Sure.
In front of the president? Okay. So I am Italian, half. I tend to feed everything, including the deer. I apologize if you don't agree with that. And congratulations, okay? You can smile. I try to reach out to you, and maybe we could have a time going forward where we all can work together. That would be wonderful. So in the interest of Christmas, thank you. You've been a big help. You helped me save me from foreclosure many years ago. Thank you, chief. I trained with you in 29, so I always appreciate what you taught me about my employment. This is for you. Thank you. Town Council President, I did see him in the grocery store a few weeks ago, and I asked him how he was feeling, and he said, I've been so many months and days, but I'm not comfortable. So he was done. But you've been very devoted. And I remember when your father Doyle's, Donnie, liked to care for years, because a bishop asked me to. And for you, I grew up with your family. I remember your wonderful father, and you continued that in the community, the work that he did. And a lot of people get very upset about what we used to call in Hollywood, you know, when you hire somebody that's in your family, in the most picture business, and there's a lot of criticism. But really, you know, and I wanted to say that to you. John, thank you for the legal advice. Thank you for being so aware of everything going on. And I'm sorry, I'm being obnoxious, I know, but this is for you. If you don't mind, may I approach? So I know you may be the new town council president. I've heard rumors, but you might need some coffee, okay? So this is really good. It's coconut rum, and I got it at Trader Joe's, and it's delicious. And so there's a piece of offering there. And also, because I was the first person to take the meetings way back when, okay? So this is for you. Thank you to local education as well, I guess, of course. And so, and I even brought a present, a present for the box outside for Toys for Tots. So anybody in Long Beach is watching this, I hope that you will, in fact, donate. So thank you for putting up with me. I appreciate your time here, and God bless, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. And let's go forward in love, peace, and understanding, and kill some old blooms wherever they might be. And please don't kill the deer. That's all I'm going to ask. Okay, thank you.
Got it. Any other public comments here? Any public comments on Zoom?
Yes, this is the fire department.
Did you bring presents?
Yes.
Now, I'm asking if you're sending presents.
I'm.
I'm teething, Far. Go ahead.
I want to express my thanks to Chief Bruce, of the police department, and Chief John Wall of the fire department. Through my efforts, to contribute to my fire.
So Far, move further, so Far, move further away from the microphone. We're having a hard time understanding you.
Okay, let me start. Can you get enough?
Yes, much better.
Okay, I, let's start. I want to express my thanks to Chief Bruce, of the police department, and Chief John Wall of the fire department. The aftermath of my efforts to contribute to my fire department by heights, I just have been. But hey, I hardly suspect and the more this people are sending, a police officer, who after assessing the situation, come to the fire department, chief, fortunately alive with others, and both departments ensured my life's safety. I am immensely thankful to them and all departments for their after standing assistance. After, in the super judgment of John Wall, I'm honored to thank both the fire department and police department for providing incredible services to me. They are a guest on our team. Regardless of 18 years of differences with this Mr. Wall, I request the vast organization to aid the fire department to be able to, John Wall of our building. In that, the technical reason of chief was exceptional service throughout the throughout the life of the community and as fire, by other fires. You just asked me a question. Yes, I have started for the $10,000 of the fire department, and encourage everyone to contribute to the wider community service.
Thank you.
So that's my, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Any other comments on Zoom?
I think we forgot, we forgot about the water service project, the water department project. There's a contract, Oliver.
I've got the contract.
Oh, you got it, wasn't you? Okay. Well, I could talk about it, but we.
Okay.
Or Mark, go right. Doctor, I apologize in the council's comment, council law, to bring up the water service engineering services that we will need for the commencement of the water improvement project on Lake Shore Drive and start in January. John, if you want to go into the details, I can give you the costs associated.
Yeah, so much like the other '17, '18 engineering. So this project is a roughly $700,000, I think it was, $799,000, whatever it was, the water service project, if you recall. And HAAS, what we did was, we went back to HAAS. We've already authorized some expenditures for the engineering prior to the bidding, and then also the bidding documents and the bidding process and the award. And now they have come to us with a proposal for what's called construction inspection contract. Typically, in the industry, it's about a 10% sort of an override, which at this point would be about a $60-something thousand. So what they've given us is a not to exceed sort of a number. And what we hope to do, you know, we have our own in-house expertise to a degree. We have Greg and Austin who can watch over the actual implementation of the work of the project. But there's also all of the inspection and quantification of the bid items. So that's a unit price contract. So we'll have to have some help on that. We originally, or Greg originally thought that maybe you could do a lot of the inspection yourself. But the problem we have is if you don't have verification of the quantities, and then you start trying to pay $700,000, $800,000, it's going to be kind of problematic. So I think what we're going to have to do is, what I'm asking tonight is make a motion for approval on this not to exceed contract. I think it was 60. Do you have those numbers, Mark?
I do. The fee matrix and scope of services proposed under the construction services is an estimated total fee of $59,600. In addition to that is the material testing. We have material testing for soil protection, asphalt, and concrete testing. Estimated sum is $3,000. And speaking of riding law, as you have indicated, a large quantity of this work will be done in-house by our water superintendent, assistant water superintendent. So we are hopeful to take several, about tens of thousands of dollars off of the estimated cost. But we will need to have this contract signed by Doctor May to move forward with the services of HAAS, so we can commence the project first week in January. And we do have the funding for this in the reserves of the water department funding.
How much engineering costs are we incurring now on this '17, '18?
This has nothing to do with '17, '18. This is the water service project.
Water, I mean, huh?
The two different projects.
Okay, okay.
'17, '18, we already addressed. This is the water service project.
Guy, whatever. If you, to Councilman Coors' question, John, if you remember the, yeah, this, earlier this year, the council approved us to go out and purchase our own material for that, which we saved a substantial amount of money by purchasing the fittings, the valves, and the copper piping. And then the $699,000 contract currently out to work with Woodruff is the construction services part of it. And then this engineering supervision and material testing is in addition to that $699,000.
All right. So I'll make a motion to approve. Is there a second?
A second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Excuse me, so that's to not to exceed what number?
The contracts.
He'll get you, he'll get you that document. It should be in your, I would, I think he sent it to everybody, but if you didn't get it yet, Deanna, we'll get it to you.
Yeah, I'll forward it, Chris reported to you, Deanna. We have it pulled up now. But the sums are the, the total would be the $3,000 plus the additional.
And $59,000.
Yes, that's correct. And we'll send you the contract.
Okay. Any other public comments on Zoom? Any council comments? I believe we already did claims approval, and I think when we did that, we included the water department and payroll. Is that everybody else's impression? We good, we good with claims approval?
I actually thought that you made a motion in Yellowstone, seconded the town checks minus the 819.
Right, and the other ones were.
4-0.
As they are.
The water and the.
They were included in that. We can do, let's do them again.
But I was going to say then, it's still two, it was still 4-0 minus, okay, nevermind, 4-0.
Yeah, let's, just so there's no question, I'll make a motion to approve claims approval for the water department and payroll. Is there a second?
Sure.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Entertain a motion to adjourn?
Come on.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Very good.